I have just lost a sheet of paper that I really need. I will call this meeting to order at, what is it? 7:40 PM, December 13th. Of the agenda. Oh, of the paper that I just missed. All right, all right. We shall begin, as soon as I find it, with the land acknowledgement statement. Carolyn handed it to me just before the meeting, and I got it mixed in with my other papers. I think.
There you go, Pete.
Yeah, may I just borrow that? Pete could have revised this anywhere he wanted. It's a big word. As we gather here today, we consciously and intentionally recognize, acknowledge, and honor that we are gathering on the traditional and ancestral lands of the Seneca Nation of Indians. With a proud and rich history, the Senecas are also known as the keepers of the Western Door and for their diplomacy and oratory. They are the largest and westernmost of the six nations that constitute the Haudenosaunee Confederacy of Nations, a democratic government that predates the United States Constitution. Alfred, New York, Allegheny County, and New York State at large are still home to Seneca people who continue to assert their tribal sovereignty. They act as caretakers and stewards of this land while actively maintaining their culture ceremonies and languages. By offering this land acknowledgement, we reaffirm our gratitude and commitment for the opportunity to work for and with First Nations peoples in this place as we pay our respects to the Seneca Nation on their historic lands. And, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would assume that there are a fair number of announcements, given the fact that A, semesters are ending on both campuses, and B, that we are coming into the holiday season. One announcement, the farmer's market will be doing a winter sale, winter festival, December 18th, that's this coming Sunday, at the fire hall. And I know that we already missed the Union University Church bazaar, but I think they did well. Any other announcements? Oh, art walk this Thursday. Five to eight, all right. Any others? All right.
I have one, but I'm going to wait till.
Oh, no, you can't do announcements. Okay. We will now move to our guest comment period. All right.
I would like to make a suggestion. Study. I think the need for cameras in this community is critical. And if we're going to keep this little town as a safe community, we've got to have more eyes on what's going on than what we do. And putting one on the corner terrace, one on the corner of West University, one on the corner of church, and one on the corner of Pine, and then one on Green, I think is probably enough. Probably should have two up on the R T J's, but I don't think that it's a bad idea to at least look at the feasibility of it and see if there's grants available, see if smart growth can participate in that. I just think it's something that if people know they're being watched, they're going to be less apt to do stupid stuff.
I did look into it a few years ago, and they were quite expensive. Now the technology's come down, but where you run into expense now is the monitoring, depending who's monitoring it, or the storage of any footage. But I agree with you, I think it is something that we do need. Hopefully, we won't have to cut any trees to do it.
No. I would make that definitely.
Yeah, it is definitely, when we put up the speed signs, that made a difference in traffic. So I would think cameras probably would have maybe that same effect.
I think it'll act as a deterrent and it'll give another eye on a situation that you can go back and look and say, okay, who was down here doing this?
There is quite a few cameras you're talking, we are able to use in private cameras that people have, the young business owners like yourself, they have them outside of building. Things happen, so they are very useful, definitely without a doubt.
I have a really stupid question. If people know there's a camera there and it might keep them from doing something wrong, what keeps them from taking the camera?
Not a stupid question, for an L P V, put cameras up. And you got to put them up high enough that they can't get to them. They're usually up on a pole, we usually got to have, this is where you run the logistics issue, you got to have permission from telecommunications or NICE, I don't know whose pole it is and all that. The other thing that they did find, for an L P V, they put the cameras downtown in the city, and it pushed the crime that was down there now out onto the streets further out. So the crimes that they were having downtown, they were now having on some of the side streets for more residents. So that was one effect of it. So it's one of those things where, you know, one solution might lead to another. You know, it's just one of those things. That's what they found anyway, so if their cameras die, I don't think they plan on replacing them because it was effective in one area, but.
Worth looking into, though.
Yes, absolutely.
Anyone else? Oh, Devon.
There's a couple of streetlights out on West University.
They have them. Trey, you can report it yourself, but I'll tell you what, I have reported, we have one down on our street that's been out now for almost two years, and I reported it on a regular case.
My guys report them all the time, because they can go right through the car and the internet.
It's on the NICE side?
Yeah.
Yes.
So NICE, it's.
NICE Street, like, when you start taking NICE Street, and it comes up as a suggestion. Tom just called me today because he said that his guys have a whole huge list of them out in the village.
Part of the challenge, I think, is that we signed the agreement to switch over all of them to LEDs. So they're probably less inclined to want to come out and fix one of the ones before they come and replace them. That's just my guess, I don't know that for certain.
At some point, they're going to start swapping the village over.
Yeah, it's within the next year, basically.
There's another thing also, and that was when they came through and put in their new poles, they cut off the old poles at a certain height and then just wrapped the two together, and we were promised, I think, that those unused poles would be removed. So I think, I think, I don't know, we talked to NICE.
And that was two years.
Well, I think NICE, though, everything along the top lines are actually communication lines. I think it's up to the communication companies now to get their things moved over. So I don't think it's, you were saying NICE, I think you're waiting on other companies to do the thing now.
All right, okay, any other? All right, we need board. I would like to introduce Joshua Van Skyver. And Paul, if you want to, you know, talk about this, you may, but. Welcome.
This is Joshua, he's going to be our new sergeant with the Alfreds, please start with. Bill Verch is transferring to Cuba to work where he lives and his brother's chief there. So I kind of knew that was coming eventually at some point. But Josh worked here back in 2003 with us part-time, before he went on to have a career in Corning, Elmira, and now currently with the Stewart County Sheriff's Department. You're the reigning, what, D W I? I hold the record for New York State for number of D W I arrests prosecuted and convicted. Which is about 3,000? 2,258.
Just this year?
No, that's taken me 20 years to achieve that. So Josh comes with quite the resume. And we're hoping that, you know, since we're losing Dylan, who's been a fantastic officer and sergeant for us, you know, he's got some big shoes, so he's got the biggest feet I've seen. So we're hoping that, you know, some of what, some of the knowledge that Josh has towards his years on law enforcement, pushing him to some of us, you know, with the D W Is. He's, you were SWAT team commander, what else have you done? Trying to think of your resume out there, and it was a couple of pages long. So going from Corning to Elmira to Stewart County, it's, you know, quite a career, and so far, now I think he's, now he's looking for a little change of pace coming to Alfreds. So now he gets to deal with parking issues.
Streetlights.
I think the important thing is, is that he's a hometown person. He lives here in Alfred, he lives up on East Valley Road, or just off East Valley Road, Verdant Road, correct? And I think it's going to make a big difference in the community to have one of their own as part of it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I'm happy to come home.
Thank you very much. All right, we need board action to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of November 8th, 2022.
So moved. I'll second.
Meredith moved and Josh.
Jim moved, did he?
That's twice tonight.
Okay. Jim moved. It's okay.
Michael, it was coming.
Michael's coming.
I know that also.
And maybe Nick.
All right. Okay, minutes. We have a motion on the floor, it has been moved and seconded. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions? I just, again, say thank you, Carolyn, it's astounding, all those. Are you ready to vote? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? We will assume there are no extensions, it's unanimous, thank you. All right, moving on. That's the minutes, I need the agenda. We need board action to approve the clerk treasurer pay rate of, and effective starting a certain date. I'll be very forward about this, I propose that Carolyn's hourly rate become $28.0 and effective September 8th, 2021, thus retroactive for the time that our then treasurer did leave.
Would it be a challenge, maybe not, would it be a challenge to go to the prior fiscal year? I just want to make sure that the accounting stuff doesn't get silly. I know, I did, I know I did. Right, because you do that, perfect. I just want, you know, because generally, applicable accounting standards, you want to have your side. This guy taught me. You know, your revenue, expenses go with the revenue gain. So yes, September what?
Eight. I think that was the one part of the equation that we were missing, was a report from you, Pete, as to our financial budget and the impact.
Of course, the impact, Carolyn's worth it, so.
Is there any portion that had been contracted out from the date that we're suggesting? So did any of the work, is it still contracted out?
So my, Peter will be better at this than I, but yes, a fair amount of the work was contracted out, but it was mostly the paperwork, the generation of the printouts and that kind of thing. And we were paying the previous treasurer per hour some slightly less than this. And so, oh, I'm sorry, yes, slightly more. And so when we moved that work out, it only makes sense that this is a reasonable increase for Carolyn taking over that position.
So we're no longer contracting that out?
We are still contracting it out, but we are not paying the person who held the position, and so that.
It isn't the contracted work, it's the amount of work that is involved in preparing that information to get to them to do the final product that they're producing. And that, from my conversations with Carolyn, is huge, is, it's not, they do all the light work and they just put it in book form, right?
Yeah, there's a kind of oversight and responsibility that they have made in stuff that they produce, but it just doesn't happen. And when I was out sick in Monica's education, I was very concerned, I'm calling Paul up, I'm calling Tom up, trying to, because we do a lot of work to send the stuff to them to do payroll.
If you had everything in house, people, four. Literally, you would.
Kathy said if they were to require two full-time people, she said that many times to me, because she wanted me to go full-time at them and find out the time to do that. But so with one part-time person doing that, I was trying to do two full-time people's stuff and learn a new system and connect the message.
And I think that that last is significant. We are getting much more timely information, much more timely and better record-keeping, and so on and so forth, because Carolyn is here and B B S is there as well. So the system is working better.
So basically, on the overall budget, we're just about breaking even from where we were. Or slightly over.
I mean, I don't know, because we'll have to, the back, we'll make it work, we'll see.
I appreciate that, and, but I'm just, it's hard, because what we take from Peter, we take.
Right, right.
We paid John.
Or Jim.
I'm not, I know how hard Carolyn works. I wa, I spend hours here messing around, and I realize that it's an incredible amount of work that she puts in. I don't ever see her just relaxing, it's on target all the time.
And one other factor, Monica is a really fine addition, and Carolyn is also working with Monica to learn, so they both know each other's positions. And that's monumental in what we're doing. Any other discussion? Okay, are you?
So we're voting on 28?
We need a motion.
We have 28 on the table.
28 on the table and retroactive to September 21st.
What was September?
September 8th.
Okay.
Okay, so Peter moved and Meredith seconded.
And I'm voting yes.
Any discussion?
No, I thought we were going to executive session, but this is better than.
We can never spend public money without a public, this has to be done in public.
Okay, more, I know. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
All right, all right, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? And I assume there are no extensions. Thank you very much, and congratulations, and thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, we need, this is, this is the moment, guys. Board action to approve local law 2022-2 Regulation of Parking of Motor Vehicles on Public Places, and. Thank you, is there a second?
A second means that you're not approving it, it just means you're bringing it to the table.
Yeah, all right, okay, for discussion.
So I think we discussed it.
To some degree.
This will be a roll call vote, by the way. And I am happy to repeat again the reasons that this has come forward, and that is that there are issues with that parking law, especially between November 1st and May 1st. And my feeling is that it would benefit all of us in the community to make that consistent with the rest of the parking law on the village's streets. I'll also reiterate that until about eight years ago, it was part of the ban on parking November 1st to May 1st. And I voted against it, it was changed, by the way. So, yeah, I am being consistent. But it really needs to be able to be a place that can be cleaned when it's snowy and maintained properly.
Well, it is, I mean, on behalf of the Public Works Department, it is, it's a liability to them. They had a terrible time maintaining that, and the greatest fear was damaging another vehicle and the liability falling on the village. So I'm totally sympathetic, but if we can find a plan to come up with both solutions.
But when I'm voting. I equally, I'm not opposed to getting back there, to me, to get to that saying, okay, I'm willing to vote against, because again, like you, I think I voted to allow it. So I would like to be able to have some kind of intermediate step where we try it. If it's equally as ineffective, then be right there to say, you know, we tried to find an alternative, and even the alternative won't work.
Right.
We have to go back. I respect what the crews, the challenge, I know myself, trying to pull into a big icy blocks and to the two grooves that are there, you know, was a challenge last year, and I did not enjoy it at all. So I want to avoid that as well. But I'd love to try something, I don't know, before going, it just does this dichotomy, like finding a middle ground. I don't know, others thoughts? So maybe we'll have to do more work to try and come up with a solution. Talk to find out what would be a solution that Tom and Brian think is, you know, amenable for them to do it, what Paul and Joshua think they can, you know, enforce, you know, if it's a matter of, as I said, like, problems starting in November going around and saying, we know that this side's on Mondays and Thursdays, we take it this side, and on Tuesdays and Fridays, we take it that one, or, you know, whatever we come up with. To make sure that by the time the snow starts to fall, where it needs to be cloud, folks understand, I don't know.
I just propose an alternative to this, that I would, I would hope that we could vote this law in, and at the same time, mount a public campaign that says, those of you who park here on a regular basis, you should make contact with A State, A U for parking permits so that snowy nights, or on November 1st and May 1st, you have a different place to park.
But we do not know it's students, so we're not sure.
And one of the reasons that we did, in fact, make the move was that there were young professionals who needed a parking space and didn't have an opportunity to contact the colleges to find a place to park.
Is this on our survey? Is, I know parking is on the survey.
Correct.
Right.
Any other?
Last page.
Yeah.
We have moved it and seconded it, we have had a public hearing, we've had discussion. Are you ready for the roll call vote? All right, I will do it alphabetically, trustee Gil.
I don't know.
Trustee Gil, nay. Trustee McLean?
Nay.
Nay, all right, and I will, I will make it clear that I would have voted for this. I really think it's a step we need to take, and I.
I think the next inherent on the four of us to come up with a proposal to bring back and hopefully have in the next month or two.
I do suggest rapid movement because.
Right, what, that was an excellent. You know, unfortunately, we waited till now to do.
And again, and it, we'd set the meeting a month ago, and it wasn't until Jim and I were sitting in the planning board that we thought, is this an alternative that we're comfortable with? And we both thought, yeah, we wanted to explore that.
That's part of the focus of the planning board right now, is working on our parking project.
We shall move on. We need board action to appoint Joshua Van Skyver to the police sergeant position at a rate of $65,802.81 per year effective December 26th. Merry Christmas. 2022.
So moved, second.
Discussion? Jim, I got it.
Thank you.
And then Paul was. All right, any discussion? Are you ready to vote? All right, I'm going to interrupt and just do a little discussion thing. Joshua Van Skyver was vetted through an interview panel of people at A State, A U, and the village, and he was an absolute standout candidate, and so we feel very fortunate to be able to make this appointment. So given that, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, we are, congratulations, thank you, and as Jim said, welcome home. All right, we need a board action to appoint Alexandria Roselle, is that Roselle? As a part-time police officer at the rate of $17.42 an hour.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Could you tell us a little about her?
Yeah, she just graduated the police academy in, they graduated in September. End of September. End of September, and she's currently working part-time for Northmore now. I don't know if any of you know her father, Tim Roselle, who's a local attorney. He's also a district attorney for Stewart County. So she's got a little bit of a law background, and it was from her father, and was the only girl in the last piece of academy, I believe, and was, did a phenomenal job. I instructed her in a few classes, and I know Josh did too, and she seemed to be a standout. Spoke with her here a few times, and she seemed like she would be a good fit for us. So I asked her if she was interested in applying, and she did, and here we are. So I'm confident that she's going to be a good candidate for this party.
Any other discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor of appointing Alexandria Roselle as a part-time police officer? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are, we are doing well. We, you know what happens if I leak them, okay, just remember that. We do have to address in, by our next board meeting, the pay rate for part-time officers.
We just lost another one over the weekend. So now we're down six, we've got, with Roselle, we're up to five, but currently we're at four.
Okay.
But this is, this is going on everywhere. Because guys that, a lot of part-timers now are being picked up full-time, full-time guys retired, and there's not a lot of people on the west that are going through the police cadence anymore, which is unfortunate, but a lot of, every department is working short. I don't know about any department that isn't struggling right now to find officers.
Okay, so that is.
And that's one way of maybe retaining some. That's part of some of the issues, you know, with, I've had some guys, they go on to other agencies because they're, they're making more money and they're getting more hours. So why would you work for less hours and less money when you go?
Yeah, makes sense.
Leasing in twenty twenty-three is way different than ten years ago. And right now, our part-timers in the law enforcement field have the luxury of picking and choosing because these departments are paying, you know, high, have excellent benefits. So as opposed to ten years ago where they were, you know, happy to come anywhere they could to get a foot in the door. Now they can really, they can choose. It's, it's not so true.
Yeah. Understood. All right, thank you, everybody. We'll move on to working groups, committees, faces.
We need to do something about it. I don't know.
Are all the staff?
That, that's where we we ran into a a hindrance was a number of the positions that, at least the university side were replaced. And I'm not sure that they've been assigned to that, so. Yeah. I'm having lunch with one of the guys who's on the committee tomorrow, so I'll check in on at least Alfred State's side to see if we can find them.
I think the AU side is pretty much.
All right, so we'll maybe have an update. I'll try to have an update for next month.
This also points to something that I hope with this new initiative with both presidents and and the village that we can have a structure in place that when some position does change, that that the work that we want to do will not depend on who's in the the given positions. So, yeah, I believe me, sympathize. Alfred Community Coalition, and I have to talk about two different things here. But what what started as our COVID conversations in basically March of twenty twenty-one have now morphed from, we talk about COVID, we talk about flu, we talk about RSV. But those are mostly reports at the beginning and we have transitioned into talking about our our planning for Hot Dog Day, for this developing a lease that could be suggested to landlords. And by the way, that would be run past our planning board once we have have that form. But the, even with changes in personnel, we're we're feeling like we're managing fairly productively. We also added to the discussion, it's no longer just mayor and emergency services and each A A State and AU's VP for Student Experience. But we've now added the assistance for student experience so that we get a broader, broader base and better coverage. But we're, we're six to seven people meeting once a month. So far, oh, with Paul and so far by Zoom. And we're trying to figure out a way, one of the essential members works in Hornell and she would not be able to commute here for noon meetings on Fridays, Friday once a month. But we are working on how we will get back to in person because it is so valuable. And then the other working group to report on, we don't have a name for it, but it is the initiative that was aired tonight in the community discussion of both presidents, mayor, deputy mayor. Were working to add town supervisor to this discussion group. And we invite people in who have different or or very strong perspectives and resources to contribute to this. But we did agree as the groups that we would start by the downtown revitalization grant. And and Peter, by the way, is is on way too many committees. And I think we're also committed to now the discussion that we had tonight. Making that essentially a quarterly discussion. That's acceptable. So, but I have to say, except for the very first Hot Dog Day, which I wasn't here for. I really believe this may be the first time in the history of this village that all three of the major entities recognized that doing this kind of work together is gonna make a difference for everyone.
You know, it was really funny. Yesterday I was going through my paper work. And I don't know, maybe it was, was, I think it was maybe when I first got on the board and definitely prior to that. I found a survey that somebody had done in opposition to Hot Dog Day. And it's amazing that, oh, how how it's come back around and and we realized the the true value of what we had created. It it got out of hand for a while. I mean, we went through all of the heartaches of of, and I think we were at a point now where things are are really coming together.
But we need, so the report you may have read is one that I wrote following the two thousand fourteen Hot Dog Day where we had several arson attempts where we had two very near deaths. We had one individual so severely beaten that he is still undergoing surgeries to recover. And we had something like Paul, I don't know if you can help me, fifty-three arrests. It also was a moment where the two colleges felt that the village was saying, we don't want Hot Dog Day. And actually, what we want is, yes, we want Hot Dog Day and we love the Main Street activities, but those have become dangerous because vendors had approached on the, on the travel space. And we want Hot Dog Day, we want it in the village, but our big problem, guys, is what happens after five o'clock. And so that report and Paul's becoming chief allowed us to put pressure on both schools that they had to open their health centers as drunk tanks. Saving us hours and hours and hours of transporting people to Hornell or Wellsville. It took pressure off both the local hospitals and both campuses agreed to a one-guest-only policy for students and that all students had wristbands. So it it cleaned things up beautifully and then COVID hit. So well, and and our plan is, I think we all felt that this last Hot Dog Day was was really quite successful.
Yeah, and and I think as far as law enforcement goes, we found a model that worked for us. We mobbed the hell out of it with cops.
Yeah.
The biggest complaint is every time I turn around, there's a cop standing there. That's their chief complaint and I talked to him, we're all right with that. And and that's, I think, muted a lot of the more dangerous shenanigans. I think it's even kind of brought down the, a lot of the health.
Oh, yeah.
And stuff. So, you know, as far as the evening time, I think that's that's helped a lot in not bringing, not allowing a lot of the out-of-towners.
Right.
And there is many, you know, when the colleges, not that they don't come and can't stay off campus and stuff, but um, yeah, I think everything we did dialed them back in. In adding onto that, I've had quite a few conversations lately with a lot of the students that I'll say they would love to see it downtown because AU students don't feel comfortable on Alfred State and they don't feel comfortable on AU. I know as much as everybody wants to get together and sing kumbaya, they just don't feel comfortable. Sorry, it's just how it is human nature. But everybody getting together in the village, you know.
Right.
They see that. And and I think that makes it more, because I know a lot of people in Hornell that say, well, we used to go to it, but now that it's not a community festival, it's a college thing we're not going to.
Right.
Because being on the college campus, even though they say community is invited, they don't feel invited.
Right.
So I think bringing it back to Main Street would be big this year.
Right, I agree.
And I think we can do it better and safer than we ever have.
Thanks. I think we've gone through any possible scenario.
I mean, it's never gonna be perfect because you, you're bringing thousands of people into a small village.
Yeah.
But I think we can do it with very minimal impact to the village.
And part of that, there is a a Hot Dog Day committee working now that is between the two colleges. And at least one of our emergency services people, either Nancy Ferlong or Zach Home will be the village representative to that Hot Dog Day committee. And of course, you all have the planning that you do as well.
Yeah, I mean, our, our plan is pretty, pretty similar.
Well, and I, I don't know that anyone will ever hear the repeat of these immortal words, but I really do think that all entities that contribute to Hot Dog Day need to reevaluate about every ten years. So, you know, just keep that in mind.
Okay.
So, all right, reports. Oh, Chief of Police Paul Griffith, you are first. Merry Christmas.
So November's always a little slower for us because folks are in break track. We had a hundred and fifty-four calls to service in the village. Year-to-date in the village right now, as of the end of November, we've had two thousand eighty-seven calls. We had forty-nine in the town. Year-to-date in the town, we've had four hundred and thirteen. So total for loans, we had two hundred and three calls to service, which is like I told you guys, borders, everything that we, we do from property checks to and year-to-date total, we've had, from what my assistant says, twenty-five hundred exactly at the end of. Now, arrest-wise, we had, and these are, these are charges, these aren't just separate arrests. We had, we lodged two misdemeanors in the village and four violations and four mental health arrests. That's where we actually have to take somebody into custody to send them to one of the hospitals. Either by ambulance or we take them. In the town, we had one misdemeanor and one warrant arrest, which I'll speak to a little later. So so far this year, we've had ten felony charges, a hundred and seventeen misdemeanors, sixty-five violations. The one warrant and fifteen mental health. So number of charges that we've lodged this year is a total of two hundred. DWIs, we had one in the village, one in the town. Nothing real special about any of those. So far, year-to-date, at the end of November, we were at thirty-two DWIs. I think we're gonna round out the year here with about forty. Which is about typical for us. Parking tickets, we're up in November because of two to six, we're at seventy. Total for the year so far, we've got the five hundred eighty-five parking tickets. Traffic tickets. Traffic tickets were down, just like I said, we, a lot of people left town. It was, you know, a break. We, we had fifteen in the village, twelve in the town, twenty-seven for the month. But so far for the year, we've lost three hundred seventy-eight in the village, a hundred and fifteen in the town, four hundred ninety-three total tickets. Traffic accidents, we had one in the village, four in the town. And we're actually even right now of nineteen and nineteen, nineteen in the village, nineteen in the town. Now, the towns had a lot more because some places, state police take them. These are ones that we've actually just, you know, completed the report or whatnot because the state police weren't available. Now, the one warrant was interesting. I love to hear about James Burgess out of Orale. They've been looking for him for about, I think, two months. He was supposed to be sentenced and then never skipped out on the warrant, which we found him up on the green road in a cabin hiding out up there for, he was up there for about a month or two. And Hornell PD had some information, so me and a couple of our guys, Circuit Birch and Ryan McKee went up there with Hornell PD and and found him in the cabin, which he gave himself up with no incident. He was, I think he was ready to go because he'd been sitting up there with no heat, no electric for, you know, a couple of months. And just a case of water, so. That's really, yeah, and he smelled it too. So really, it was, it was kind of a quiet month for us, nothing really to to get too excited about.
Oh, I have a question for you.
Yes.
How does something become classified as mental health?
It's usually, typically, most of them are somebody that wants to hurt themselves. Typically, it's a suicidal-type subject. So they, they, they get called us as mental health or emotionally disturbed person, or, you know, there's a lot of different things that they get called. But realistically, it's it's under the mental hygiene law, the nine-four-one mental hygiene law, which basically says, we believe somebody's gonna hurt themselves or other people due to, you know, a mental defect or a mental issue that we can take them into custody and then we basically take them to the hospital.
Okay, so you make your determination.
Yes. In a lot of times, it's, we'll get what they call pickup orders sometimes from the hospital. Hospital will send us a thing saying, hey, you need to go pick this person up. They're saying this. And a lot of times, it's family members will call us and say, hey, our son, our daughter, or you know, a friend of ours, and a lot of times with Cal students will, will get calls from their friends or even the schools themselves saying, hey, this person's saying this. So that, when we say it's an arrest, it's an arrest to the fact that we've restricted their movement, that they're not free to go. They're not being put into the court system with a mental health arrest. They're being put into the the medical system. That's why a lot of times when you see my report, if you actually look through the arrest, I don't give you their name because the way I see it, it's more of a HIPAA thing, even though I probably can. It it's, it's, that's the way I see it. I think that's something that probably we really shouldn't be able to.
There's one other step to that in terms of ambulance calls. And that is that we may get a dispatch that says assemble at the hall and wait, but we're not really told what it is. But it is often they need transport for a mental.
Yeah, it it depends on one of those too. Like, if we've got somebody and they're just saying, I want to do it. A lot of times we'll ask them, do you want to go with us? If they're medically compromised, if taking pills, cut themselves, anything like that, then we always have the ambulance. We might ride along with them, just to make sure nobody gets hurt in the back of the ambulance. But we always call them because, you know, you can't put somebody in the back of your car that's just taking a bunch of pills, you know, that would be foolish. So we still would consider that a mental health arrest, even though they transported them to the hospital. So that's how those go. And there's actually probably a lot more of these in Alfred. And we don't always, the ones that I report are the ones where we say, you're going because they don't want to go. I don't report the ones that we say, hey, do you want to go? And they're like, yeah. I don't look at that as an arrest because that's, they're willing, wanting to go, we'll call the ambulance. And that's not asking for help. There's a lot of these, a lot more of these. These are just the ones that we are telling you you're going.
Are you seeing more of these incidents?
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of mental health incidents that get transported. But the ones that you see on mine are the ones where people saying, no, I don't want to go. And we're saying, no, you're going.
But I read nationwide that we have more of mental health issues amongst students. As a trend line here.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I I don't know an agency that hasn't seen an increase in mental health.
And it sort of, one other comment, I don't know if this will help the conversation, but in ambulance calls, especially for alcohol overdoses, we almost never have a repeat. But with mental health issues, we do end up several times taking the same person. And it's always a relief when we don't have to say hear from the police, you have to hear. But, yeah, the the two work together very carefully. All right, is that it?
I think so.
Okay, so Lorette, I just want you to know that following the chief of police is not as difficult for you as it was for the previous trustee, Caitlin Brown, because it seemed like he always had something really amazing to report. And then she just had to give her report. So you're in good shape. I'm just trying to help.
Okay, okay. So.
Merry Christmas.
Well, I am gonna piggyback actually on what was said by George upstairs with students not being. With students not being willing to call nine-one-one, and also the uptick of mental health. On problems with COVID, the isolation, remember, our students are very stressed out at spinal times and everything, so. There has been created a nine-eight-eight phone number. That if you were to call nine-one-one and you need someone to talk to, they are actually gonna transfer you, but somebody can actually call nine-eight-eight. So I just want, I just wanted to bring that back up, because it's been mentioned in both of our meetings, and it's a very real issue. New York State knows that and has addressed it by creating this specific one.
So this is mental health support?
This is mental health support, suicide support. Um, yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. So I just kinda wanted to follow up on that. And then what I also wanna follow up is, thank you Devon for letting us bring to attention. That our village webpage didn't have that link to Facebook. Each post had that link. But it does now, so there's a little Facebook logo on the bottom right-hand corner. So thank you for that, because, you know, when you are inheriting a site. You might not be aware of what's working or not working, so I do appreciate all that type of feedback, so. Anything to improve on that. And then just to really address what we were talking about, a greater digital presence. So right now, what I am doing is I am sharing all the different businesses on our central Facebook page. But it has been talked about maybe, you know, having ability to have all of our, you know. Restaurants lined up on a digital page where somebody could, when they're coming into town. Look and say, you know, this is where I could eat or something like that. Our current platform, our current website does not support that. It's, it's, we have purchased something that's there for all the utilities. Basically, that's what it was built for. I don't know what the new site looks at, you know, it's gonna look like, but that's something, keep in mind. That, you know, being able to have a page where it's not just Facebook, because not everybody likes Facebook. That Facebook is becoming less popular. And, you know, but that's where it's centralized now. But so that's something we can kind of talk about. I look at that, does have one, and if you look at different villages, they do have, you know, some central pages where you turn there and. Everything pops up, so. Yeah, that'd be kind of nice.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, but the thing is, we have, but which is very unique to Alfred. We have students that are so equipped. I mean, Caitlin Brown, yes, she, that was, you know, she went to school for that. She's, and but, and your your next trustee, hopefully, maybe you have somebody who is still willing, you know. Well, not willing, but equipped with that type of skill, okay? But we have students. We have students that are always looking for internships. Yeah, she did have an intern. Longer listen, Alfred, just let you know, Christmas is not. But the thing is, that students sometimes are looking for projects. And maybe we should really capitalize on really a wealth that we have here in Alfred. Students that are looking to contribute. And sometimes it's even, you know, a mandatory project. You know, not all our students are. I I I have so many examples of wonderful citizenship by our students that almost, it makes me emotional. And so I just really want to emphasize that although a lot of times our students. Get attention because of that one bad apple, there are so many opportunities. For example, and it wasn't this year, because we really haven't had the snow and ice, but there was one year that I actually slid off the road. And a student stopped and helped get me back on the road, okay? There's just so many good things they do do, and I just really want to emphasize that.
It's a really tiny, tiny percentage of ones who act out.
And they get the attention, and so not to, yeah. And then just the other thing I just wanna follow up on is that I have reported that. The automatic enrollments for Medicare Health Plus and the essential plan were ending one thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. COVID has been extended by the federal government, and now the automatic enrollments are to twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. So I do not know if I come back next month and say, you know, it's gonna be March, but it's, I'm just updating our community. That's my half, thank you.
In comparison to that, also, I will announce that if. We senior citizens on Medicare need COVID test kits. We are allowed to have up to eight test kits per person per month. And Tony at the pharmacy does handle them in that fashion. So Medicare test kits, well, COVID test kits. Okay, Meredith.
Lorette, thank you for the segue, talking about students. We had a really nice group of students from Alfred State. General Contractors Club come and do a little downtown cleanup, and they were working for several hours. I was very impressed. I don't know if Tom passed you his impressions, but they rake leaves out here and put them out by the curb. And then I saw them like an hour or two later walk around picking up trash, and I came down to pictures of them and met them and met their advisor. And their advisor really wants to continue to have the club be involved with the village and and do different kind of projects, and hopefully get involved with parks. Projects, too. So that was lovely and very exciting. And Laura posted a thank you to them on our social media, so thanks for doing that. And then the only other thing to report is that the Parks Committee is working on a survey. It has been slow going, because I was traveling a lot, and so hopefully, right after the holidays, we'll have something. Get some feedback on it.
Is there any discussion right now about adding anything accessible for ADA? Because is that something you're looking for?
Something that we're not looking at yet, but that will be part of the design process. Absolutely, yeah.
So I work for a company that actually assists different localities. Yeah, to make things accessible.
Thank you.
I just, I just want you to know that the playground may be dismantled. Relatively soon.
Before the spring?
Yeah, during the winter, although the kids mostly use that. I I, great contribution. I saw the big sand pile. Being used by the kids up the street and I thought.
The construction.
Look at that. I would have been there in a heartbeat.
Yeah, you are talking the sales street. Is it Pine Hill Drive?
Pine Hill Drive, they have a monster pile of sand there.
And if that stuff is removed and then.
Yeah, we'll put it up.
Covered with snow, like, I'm just worried about if there are any holes or anything left there.
I think eventually, what's gonna happen is that's all gonna get fenced off, because the the water tower.
Yeah.
Will go in there and.
Yeah.
They'll, that'll all be fenced off.
Okay, but as soon as they start ripping stuff out, if it changes the landscape, and then it snows and nobody can see, I'm just worried about people. Breaking ankles or.
Well, so far, I have to hand it to the guys from Blue Heron. They they have been very good. It doesn't look as attractive, only because everything, especially if you go down Saddle Street, it's all just piles of dirt. But that dirt has to settle before they they landscape it back, and I know, I mean, if you go down. High Street, they've done a fairly nice job of of in some areas, especially Hillcrest Drive. Hillcrest Drive was definitely, it looks almost the way they even got, had a chance to plant some grass in there. It was a rye grass, so it came up very quickly and will die quickly, but it it's enough to get us through the winter.
Yeah, as long as they'll do that, yeah.
Yeah. I have a meeting tomorrow morning with those guys, so I'll definitely remind them when they take that stuff out.
Move on to me. Should I say I will move on to I? Okay, so as mayor, it's been a really busy, actually, last two months. And I do feel that the community is making a lot of progress in terms of. Especially working with both colleges and so on. Fire and ambulance. Paul would be aware of a a pretty, and not a horribly busy month of November, but. A month of November where there were actually more patients who were either residents or non-residents as opposed to students. So we do have this kind of understanding that when the students are here, people get sick, but that's a. A strange, a strange thing. Also, Carolyn, I have to ask you. The fire company used to receive, I assume, from fire protection checks quarterly and.
It's in, I missed it last month.
No, be careful. I just promised I would change. But but thank you, that that makes a gigantic difference to the way the company runs. And the fire company had their first breakfast with Santa that was totally in person. In three years, and I think we had a hundred and ninety people attend, and with contributions from the community. And individuals raised a little over five thousand dollars. It's the only fundraiser that the fire company does, so. And it's fun. We have a Santa Claus, Rich, Rich Hoffman, I'm revealing a great scene there. And codes enforcement has not been easy this month. But I think because of the snowfall in mid-November. There turns out, when the snow melts away, there are an awful lot of rental properties that had a lot of garbage and. Also, our our codes enforcement officer had a kind of medical incident, so anyway, it's been very, very busy. And keeping, keeping ahead of all of it. That's a sure term.
Is Chuck doing okay?
He's back to work. He's back to work. He sent me a text on Saturday that he was coming into town, and I called him and I said. Please be sure you're okay, but we, he he does need to take care of himself.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
He's downsizing. He's giving up a few of his villages.
It's here, too.
All right, I think much of what I've been working on the last month, we covered upstairs, but as I said, yesterday, had meetings with. The folks from Empire State Development, which gives us good direction going forward on the Smart Growth Grant. The, on Friday, meeting with the presidents was good. I think Mark mentioned a couple of the, the types of projects that we're. Looking to undertake, coming out of that, potentially having Green Hall returned to kind of private ownership into the tax rolls. Potentially this plot of land all around the village hall being turned over to the village, so that we can do improvements and, you know, kind of use it. Would I think would both be great opportunities there. The Alfred State, they mentioned. The the architecture students had done a a review, which is kind of really nice for Wellsville. A couple of the professors are interested in doing a similar type of a video and 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 reimagining of our downtown from the spring semester. So I think that'll be great opportunities there.
They've done so much for the county, and they haven't done much for us in a while.
Yeah, yeah, so that's why, yeah, it's nice that they reached out.
They should be included.
Yeah.
In the playground. It'd be great.
I I did a little video with Steve Morrow, the president of Alfred State, coffee with the president, just saying. It's always weird to yourself on camera, but now, you know, it's good. We got to talk about the community and 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 collaborate on that. Talked a lot longer than the three minutes was in the video, but it was all good there. The Community Coalition, like we talked about. With the kind of the vice presidents of student affairs from both schools, we had good conversation there. Which I think leads into a similar topic, as we were discussing at that Community Coalition, about. What might be a model lease or thing to provide to the students who be living on campuses. What are their rights, what are their expectations, and potentially for property owners to use? And going off of that at the Village Planning Board, they spent a considerable amount of time going through the current. Landlord's handbook, I believe that was called, right? And it was something that was produced, I think, by Virginia, probably ten years ago or twelve years ago, and it was just really dense with information. Lots of stuff, but so dense, in fact, that you would receive it and be overwhelmed and probably not take it in. And so really streamline the information that's in there, I think, was one of the tasks, and I'll let Pat talk to that as well, from their their board meeting. And the the vice presidents of both schools were amenable to that. They liked that idea of having the the most essential information. In there, in the shortest compact, and then maybe it's go to the village website where you could see the this model lease. Go to the village website to see more information on these exact laws, but here's something like Reader's Digest version of what these things that'll affect you are. So we're hopeful, I'm hopeful, that out of some of this, we'll we'll have something to provide to all the renters and all of the. The different landlords. Pat, what do you?
Oh, I'll just add that I spoke with Chuck before we build this landlord handbook down. And so it was so easy to just remove the items. That were kind of informational, but not specific to the village policy. So we wanna stick with what it is in the village they need to know. But we also brought up that. The landlords need to know this, but the students need to have something as to, as you're saying. What are their rights and responsibilities in the village? What are their expectations?
Yeah, and 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 so again, if it's this thick, you get a page or two into it and forget it, I think, but if it's. All the most important information, as you go page to page, oh, I didn't know that, well, that's good to know, then it's a useful document where we can point them to. More information on the webpage, or more information at another location.
Are you also using that as a resource, so it's not just like rules and regulations, but also this is something.
Yeah, this is, this is what the the recycling schedule is. This is when the large trash collection is. Here's where you can go to see when the, when collection might be adjusted by a day, you know? So, but again, having it all together in such a way that it's, it flows and it's not overwhelming. There's a lot of great stuff in there. There was stuff that was explaining, what is the recycling, what is zero service cycle, so but, again, as you add more and more and more into there. It becomes self-defeating almost, unfortunately.
I think it's, I think what they're doing right now is definitely gonna be useful to, yeah. A real tool for the landlords, and no more excuses, well, I never knew, or I never heard about this, the information.
And they, and they've been doing yeoman's work on going through section by section of the zoning code to reimagine, to try to consolidate, to try to go through. Working their way through the the parking section right now, to kind of give us some recommendations on changes to that going forward, so. Yeah.
Along with that, I have a question about the emails. We are so happy to have official. Board emails, and then we heard that there is going to be a change as far as. It's not gonna be RAC space anymore, it's gonna be somebody.
Well, they're just changing the the provide, well, they're using, what are we using now? And we're switching over to Outlook.
Right, so I mean, that's, yeah, that was, thank you, that was, yeah, I had a meeting with, I can't remember the fellow's name now. Your solutions, what's his name? Yeah, and so there's three things that we need to discuss from his standpoint is one. Switching over from RAC space to to Outlook three sixty-five, I think, I don't know, something like that. Do we wanna move that? Uh do we want to move that uh to that way? I think he's recommending it because then we'll have all the licenses in-house, which means that if we move from one trustee to the next, it would all be co-located within our our domain. So we could go back and reference that if it needs to be a foyer, uh stuff pulled in, you're just straight into those other accounts. Um like the mayor's account could just be mayor and then it would just move from one mayor to the next. Exactly. So I I think that was one of his recommendations. I think we should move forward with that. The second is uh just before COVID hit, we have that um server rack that's in there. Um I think he needs to bring in, he had, he more or less has the stuff ready to go, just has to be connected in and uh and done. So that's the second one that, you know, he's recommending. It's something we said we were going to do three years ago, but then everything got held up. Um and I can't remember what the third is, but I will look it up and then email everyone uh what that was. But he's got some uh, he's just kind of worked his way through some of what our um IT challenges have been um there.
We have a timeline on the change.
I, I don't think he gave us one yet. I think it's
I think, I think when we say that we're okay with it, he'll move forward on it and then it'll get, start going there. So if we're all all thinking that it's uh it's reasonable to move to getting the uh the, those licenses for the out for uh the office suite and moving there, then he can start beginning that process.
Yeah, it's a, I think a very worthy investment. It's it will be less vulnerable as we go back. Space just was half, actually.
Okay.
And it was down. Communication didn't even happen. Um but it also has all the, you know, the different supported teams, everything. Um more cloud space.
Yeah.
So there is an expense to it, so.
Right.
It it's mostly what he said, it was a transfer of expenses.
Yeah.
One, actually Outlook will save us money because it all comes under our office.
Right. Because instead of, instead of paying, we'll, we'll buy the licenses for the different computers as opposed to paying the monthly, monthly, monthly. Um that, yeah, it could be a wash there, so. Um but uh but yeah, so if you want us to move forward with that, I said I'd bring it up at this meeting, so. That's I've seen. Okay, so then I will follow up with Shane about.
So there'll probably be a change. I don't know how drastic it's going to be. It may just end up continuing to be, I don't know. We'll, we'll find out. As soon as we know, you'll, we'll let you know.
So we'll be able to have the same address. We just have to log into it.
Correct, correct, correct. He'll just take the address and move it over. So you'll still be getting that email, except for the one gentleman who had his name spelled wrong. We'll get it corrected.
Yeah. Scott Vander.
Scott Vander. How did I know?
Yeah.
Uh and then, you know, the last thing that we've been working on is uh, then Jim will touch on this. Just questions about how the water project got ahead of schedule uh from what we were expecting. And so um just keeping up with communicating that out as well. So it's been busy. It's been a busy month.
Rebound or something. Yeah. Right. James?
Yes. Well, I'm going to make it simple because most of my report is printed out and you can hand it, but but I do want to go over what Peter just mentioned and and that is uh our our water project in particular. Our Grace Water Project is near completion. We're starting to the phase out of uh the construction going on down there. They're just taking care of the loose ends right now. But the water project line, the grant, this grant, I have to explain, started in twenty seventeen. It was first proposed by uh our trustee Drew McGinnis as a way of addressing this major project that uh well, major problem that we had at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh at that time, it was the front end part of our system that grinds up most of the heavy debris that travels down that line, grinds it up and then uh separates that from from the wastewater and it runs through the system. Our, that particular part started the project. From there, we went into uh a project that the water department at that time had. We have a a water tower up on Pine Hill Drive that uh had exceeded its lifespan and needed to be removed. And those two projects turned into what we have right now. And uh we have gone through a lot of transition. Uh one of the big part of the project that took us so long was to basically get easements to different properties. An easement is required when you cross the um right-of-way line, anything that goes beyond the right-of-way. And the right-of-way is thirty feet from the center of the road in the village. And um I have to say that uh it um it wasn't until just uh about two weeks ago at our last meeting that I actually saw the drawings of what's going on. I was a little taken back. I was under the assumption, and that is my fault, that I assumed that the water line would be replaced with the existing line and the new line put in the same location, which would have been right along the edge of the road. Uh that's not the case. It actually went all the way to the right-of-way. So we were, we are running just about thirty feet uh from the center of the road, which ends up in what turns out to be people's front yards. And it's um, it was something that myself personally, I wasn't prepared for. Uh I have to say the guys are working diligently. The blue heron guys are moving. We didn't expect to get as far as we are right now. We expected to do hill press drive. We figured winter would set in. They'd shut them down. These guys don't shut down. They're going to continue on. If they can continue working in three feet of snow, they're going to continue working. They're not going to stop until they get part one of this project. Part one of this project is the south end of the village. The next part is going north, all the way, starting at the wells in Alfred Station on Shaw Road. There are two on the very end of Shaw Road and then one in front of the um town building. Our our two wells, our two primary wells. And we will run from there, run the water lines back in that direction which need to be replaced. And um right through North Main Street and that end of the village will end up seeing the, along with that project will also be the new water tower on Pine Hill Drive. Uh it's been tough. Uh we, we uh had one of the people in the village make it us aware that they weren't notified. And um you know, there's a lot of reasons for that, mostly because we didn't settle this project until September. So we really didn't. There were three alternatives. We didn't know which alternative we were going to take. But it ended up being the one that we originally hoped to have and um the project, they're, they're flying with it. And that left us sort of unprepared. So we uh, you know, brought to our attention, we have gone through the areas that are going to be worked on, dropping off. If we can't talk to the people that are, that own the property, we're leaving these notices out with information to get to our our line. This is really to notify them that uh we are in the process of uh putting a new water line, that we are marking the locations of that water line on their property. And if there are any kind of concerns that any of the citizens that are property owners may have, that they can notify the village and we will try to accommodate whatever requests they have. Now, we, we can do it to a certain degree, but you can't move it over four feet. It, the water line has, it's one continuous piece, so you really have to do, and there are some concessions we've made. Um most of them, I have to say, with the exception of one issue that was brought to our attention, most everybody in the village has been accommodating. We've had, you know, some odd in its mailboxes and the red's mailbox, you know, how can we do? But for the most part, it's been uh, it's been pretty terrific. And uh the end result, I'm hoping in by spring, we'll see some action on some of the areas that they've, they've redone. I, I'm, I'm impressed that they're, they're moving forward as quickly as they are. But I don't want them to, you know, try to move so quickly that they ignore the needs of the people who live in the village. And I think they're accommodating that. I've left on this thing, I've left my personal phone number. So if there's any questions that people might have, Tom has put his personal phone number on this notice, so if there's any questions. But uh we are, we are there to answer anything and do whatever it takes to make sure that everybody gets the information they need. It's more about the project.
So, yeah, I am the fourth street up on High Street. They do move, for house, for house.
Yeah.
Okay. And I just really want to thank Blue Heron. They have been very perceptive. I didn't realize how far in they were coming. And I have a treasured flower garden and I was out there digging up my garden and they came on over and said, can we help you? So we say, you know, we have some flowers in the house now. Um but they also saw me, you know, putting cement down um to put my mailbox back and they backed up and came down and helped me with that. And then my neighbor um doesn't have a saw and they, they have to take out trees because they have come in or not take out trees, take out branches. And so she basically said, you know, can you please cut up this wood? I don't have ability to do that. So what I'm trying to say to our residents is that if you have a need, please ask because they're very courteous, um you know, and and uh they do want not to step on toes.
That's right.
Okay. The other piece is, um you know, we have to be patient. They left us a lot of clay. It's clay. It's not nice. Um but just to know that they have promised that they're coming back. They're going to level that out.
And put tops.
And put top soil. And I just hope it's not, you know, really cheap grass because, oh, you know, the flowers are gone. It's somehow it's grass, so.
Well, you get, I mean, once, once they level it off and clean it up and if you want to leave it as a flower garden and not have them plant grass there, that I'm sure.
They have replaced it with clay. I have, uh
Well, that's, that's what, what you have are the spoils of what, of digging out that trench. And what is underneath about what, maybe three inches to six inches of topsoil is nothing but clay. And that's what you're saying. They will, they will make it right. They've already assured us of that.
All right, cool.
Okay. And everything else is uh in the list.
Last university?
No, that's Sex and Drive.
East University.
Yeah, East University.
East, East University Street. And there are some real indicators. First of all, I never knew there were businesses on Sex and Drive or East University Street. You're looking up. Yeah, now at the top of the picture where there's a a little house in the middle, just under the D, you're going to see some debris there. That is what's left of the president's house. It used to be called the White House or the Allen Home. And uh that was, uh that burned down. The building that you're looking at in the background there is Berta Call. Berta Call went from that location to where Canacadia, Canacadia Hall is now down, one more level down to the creek level. And then I think it was nineteen sixty-something that burned down.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. There you go. Fifty-seven that burned down and and never replaced. But that's a long, I mean, that's amazing that you can take a three-story building, put it on with horses, not with machinery, and move it that down a hill into that location. Apparently, yeah, I remember when I was a kid, I used to live on Terror Street and we used to be able to put our sleds on, on the street and slide down and the DOT.
Is this crossing South Main Street?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. What year do you think it was?
Nineteen twenty-seven is my guess because that's where the president's house burned.
Yeah, but nineteen twenty-seven. Okay. Yeah, but um how old is it there yet?
That was thirty-five.
That was thirty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-seven. That works for me.
I think about twenty-seven.
And that, and the, the gateway, the the two piers are, yeah, what year is that?
That was, that was
It says twenty-twenty-two, aren't it?
Well, yours is twenty-fifty.
You put twenty-two on?
He's, he's putting it to the date of your report.
All right. Anyhow, that's uh, that's the extent of my report. Oh, one last thing. I do want to mention that at the last town board meeting, since I'm the delegate to go, the, a lot of the stuff is really town, town-related. But there was a project that was um brought up, is the sidewalk project with Greg Salmon from Alfred Alfred State came in and uh had announced to the town board that they would help the village. They wouldn't take his full responsibility, but they would help the village in the snow removal on the new proposed sidewalk going to Delaware General, which was a blessing as well. Well-received. And it was, it was one of our major stumbling blocks. And uh I think that kind of resolved that problem. It certainly did. Yeah, it didn't resolve. You're right.
All right. Um, public comment?
You mentioned you're possibly looking for students or a website. Help. Uh you might email Larry Newberger. You know, the Department Chair of uh
Thank you.
Yep, he's going to be the Department Chair of the Alfred State.
Thank you, Dan.
Design.
Hi, Dan. DMA?
Yeah, DMA. So you might, if you email him, you might be able to say, oh, yeah, these students might be good.
Graphic media.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if they have assignments. Um I have been told by my own daughter, who's a college student, is that when, you know, they're very busy, they're not interested.
Yeah.
And, you know, picking something else up. So have to be, I would think at the beginning of the school year, not certainly at the end of something. But that's great. I mean.
What can you do is email?
Right, right.
All right. Anyone else? Kat?
I just want to add to um what the rep was saying. Tom came to our house to hand out the literature on the water project. And I thought that was a wonderful idea. I don't know whose idea it was, but to inform so personally, to come to the house and explain and be willing to answer any questions that I had and put forth what he saw as concerns that we might have, like digging up our brand-new driveway, you know.
We talked about that. We, we are definitely going to run the apron off the street. We're paving, as soon as this project's done, uh Sale Street and um Pine Hill Drive will be repaved. And we will put the apron up to your, so it's one piece, even though there might be a little seam going through your driveway. It'll be one continuous place. But we're, I mean, we're not doing it just for you. We're going to do it for everyone that we've done it to. If they have a paved driveway, we will run it to the line. We'll run our pavement up to that.
I thought that was very important to um to inform us ahead of time so that we didn't get upset with finding this out as a fact. And what I thought was most important was that he said that they would fix it temporarily. And that would, they'd come back in the spring because I could see myself saying, oh, I don't like that. But now I know.
Not a lot. We, we've heard that a lot. Well, from, if you talk to the guys, most of them have explained, they've gone to, if it wasn't Tom, it was Brian. And we did, as we moved along, we did go to house to house as, you know, to inform them, we're going to be doing this to your front yard tomorrow. Um but it it really needed pre-planning. It was, it needed to go before. And, you know, it just was one of those things, we just, it just didn't cross our minds. We should have done it, that, you know, when Tom and I talked about this prior to that, that we should have been out there doing this a long time.
We didn't expect them to keep going. We kind of thought, well, the weather's turning, they're going to stop. And then it got ahead of us and we realized, oh, yeah, there's
Right, absolutely.
Go until they're done, so.
Yeah.
It's, well, I'm glad you appreciate it. I'll let Tom know that how much you do care.
Can you give me that name one more time, please? I thought that Can you give me that name one more time, please? I got the email, not name. No, I have the email, I don't have the name.
Uh Lauren, I mean, you know, you'll immediately tell me Larry.
Larry.
Yeah, Larry.
Oh, Newburgh, right? Oh, so just add a G F E.
Okay, so we will um proceed with the end of the meeting. We're going to back up in our agenda to make one uh addendum to um. It's uh section seven, new business, part D, part-time police officer appointment. Um we have to add the effective date to that motion. So what we're gonna do is just redo the motion, alright? So we need board action to appoint Alexandria Roselle as a part-time police officer. At the rate of seventeen dollars forty-two cents an hour, effective December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So move it.
And I second. End of second. Alright, any discussion? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. And we are unanimous, okay. Someday I'm gonna say anonymous, just to see. Okay, so uh section eleven, finance. We need board action to acknowledge receipt of the October fiscal summary and financial report.
Yes. She asked me if she should change that, and I said, well, let's see if you figure it out, and you did.
I'm I'm delighted. I'm so glad that I could. Okay, next time you two wanna crank, just let me know. Board action to acknowledge receipt of the November fiscal summary and financial statement. Jim has moved.
Yeah.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, and he has seconded. Um alright, now. We vote on this, right? Yeah, right. So discussion? Just accept, guys. Alright, um all in favor, please say aye. And I hear no opposition, so thank you. And now bills. Board action to pay bills in the total amount of. Thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents as detailed below and on the abstract list distributed to the board. General fund, two hundred thousand, two hundred, two thousand, sorry, eighty-four dollars and seventy-three cents. Water fund, thirty-four thousand one hundred seventy-eight nine dollars and nine cents. And sewer fund, thirty-six thousand two hundred seventy-four dollars and eight cents. Capital project, seventy, uh sorry, seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, there's the B. A hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-nine cents. Alright, so that totals, I haven't done the arithmetic, but one million, eleven thousand. Six hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. Do I hear a motion?
That's, we don't need a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second, well, I'll let somebody else.
Alright, and and uh Jim, you.
You have to make the motion. Otherwise, we can't leave. I gotta watch, I gotta watch the person vote by. I gotta see if they find the torch.
Are we adjourned?
No, we have to vote on this motion to accept uh the board actions to pay bills.
Yes, let's do it.
All in favor, please say aye. Whoa, that was nice. And I will rule that as unanimous. Um and so we now have the opportunity to adjourn, but only after we know. That the next regular board meeting will be Tuesday, January tenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven thirty P M.
I'll be in Central America.
That's so cool. Alright, so are we adjourned?
I was pressured.
Yes, you do, you gotta check again.